To exercise the duties of the office. To which I have been elected. And that I will, to the best of my ability, discharge the duties thereof. And preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of this state. And of the United States. So help me God. So thank you all so much for your willingness to serve our community and our school district. And I look forward to working with each one of you. Thank you. Yes, sir? Yes, sir. I do have the form available for them to sign. And we will have to have these notarized. And we'll do that, and we will send these in. They have to be sent in to Columbia.
We're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Do we have confirmation of notice to the meeting?
Yes, sir. Media was notified.
Okay. And we do have a declaration of accord. I'd like to welcome everyone with John Yan to witness this meeting. Thank you all for being in attendance to the new members. I want to say thank you for coming out. Well, your active participation in your county should make it a better place. I'm sorry I couldn't be in the room with you tonight. And I think I also shared that sentiment with Mr. Varner that we are under some circumstances where we don't have COVID. We simply came in contact with someone who had it. So that's the reason we're not there. But with that, I'd like to say welcome. Thank you. And now we have your plan to leave. Will you stand?
Our plan is to give the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
I do have a question about the agenda. I just want to be sure, and if we need to adjust the agenda to do this, that we're able to take board action after we discuss the school operations and current community health crisis.
I can't. Can you say that again, please?
I would like for us to be able to take board action after we discuss the school operations and current community health crisis, if needed.
Well, Mr. Little called the policy BEDB. There's no motion. And motion can't be made without a call of need. So we will discuss the operation. But we can't have a vote on it. And we have to carry it over to the next school board meeting.
Well, then why are we here, Mr. Carpenter?
Big what?
Then why are we here?
Because you requested a meeting.
For board action?
No, he didn't say anything about action. He's saying it to me.
No, I specifically requested a meeting so we could discuss and make sure that everyone's on the same page regarding the red face. Because in September of last year, we had a board vote to remove the red face. And we need a board vote in order to allow Dr. Thomas to implement the red face.
I hear you, Ms. Little. But what I'm saying is that board policy not going to allow it because we cannot amend a call of need by law.
Okay, I'll make a motion then to break the rules. I forget what the official term is. But add this to the agenda. I asked for this also before the agenda was published. And had zero response from anybody else other than that was exactly the way it was asked to do that.
Who did you ask?
I replied all on the email with the agenda to make a note that it's needed to have a board action if needed on the agenda. It was in the reply all of the email.
Well, by policy, we can't do it. And I'm going to move to the next school board meeting.
We can also make a motion to break the policy at this time and have a board action if needed.
No, I'm not going to break the policy. I'm not going to put a motion to break policy.
That would be a point of order. You are allowed to do that.
Yes, I think if the majority of the board agrees to that, then you are allowed to set aside policy.
Okay, based on the language of the policy, you're out of order based on the language. So we're going to move on to discussion.
Anthony, we can adjust the agenda with a majority of the board vote.
It's not called the policy. So we're going to move on to discussion.
No, I would like to know which policy are you referring to?
I beg pardon?
Which policy are you referring to?
What? Policy BEDB.
Vice Chairman Carpenter, if I could, with the clarification of the policy, Mr. Murray is here. If I would like to ask him for clarification.
There is some confusing language across multiple policies. But the policy that's specific to special meetings says the policy that's specific to special meetings says that the only thing that can be discussed in a special meeting is what was put out when the special meeting was called. And you cannot amend the agenda for a special meeting.
And we're not asking to change the topic of a discussion. We're asking to add board action if necessary.
That would still be an amendment.
Read specifically the board will policy business set by the agenda. The board may amend the agenda during any meeting, any meeting. It doesn't say regular meeting. It says during any meeting by a two-thirds vote of the members present if the matter is a discussion item.
If it involves an emergency or exigent circumstances. But again, there's a conflict in policy. That conflict, if you can't agree tonight, and per Mr. Carpenter, he has the right to determine what comes before the board and what doesn't. If you disagree with that, then all he could do is refer it to board counsel, to the attorney, to have the attorney make that determination. And the attorney's not available tonight, so you would not be able to do that tonight.
It doesn't say anything about referring it to the attorney. It says by a two-thirds vote of the members present.
I'm familiar with the policy.
I'm referring to policy BEDB, paragraph two.
Read policy, I believe it's policy BE. That pertains specifically to special meetings.
And Mr. Varner also said this matter would need to be referred to the board attorney before a final decision could be made if there appears to be a disagreement with the policy. Just so we have to move on.
Anthony, can you repeat that? I apologize. I didn't hear what you said.
I beg pardon?
I didn't hear what you said. Would you repeat it?
I said according to the policy, I'm reading from the policy, that this matter would need to be referred to the board attorney before a final decision could be made if there appears to be disagreement with the policy. And we don't have that authority.
So what policy? I was about to say y'all clearly are reading two different policies.
What's in this letter?
You two, Todd and you Anthony, must be reading two different policies because y'all are saying different things.
I'm reading BEV eight. And I think that's what he's saying we're reading. Am I right, Mr. Varner?
I was on both BE. I was on both BE and BEVA. I'm excuse me, BEDB.
Yes, that's what I'm reading from, BEDB.
Please, Lisa, because I can't get them to even pull up on here.
Are we talking about B?
We're talking about BEDB. The superintendent and co- well, the title of that is BEDB Board Agenda. The purpose to establish the basic structure for board preparation of and adherence to its meeting agenda. The superintendent in cooperation with the board chairman will prepare the agenda for regularly scheduled, called, special, or rescheduled meetings and will release it for publication no later than 5:00 PM on the Tuesday preceding the regularly scheduled monthly meeting. The agenda will include items the board will address in performing its duties as the governing body of the school district in accordance with board policy. Items of business may be suggested by board members and/or staff members. To be considered for placement on the agenda, an item must be within the scope of the board's duties, must be timely, and must be appropriate for consideration. The written request, electronic or paper, must be received a minimum of six business days prior to the desired meeting for it to be reviewed for the agenda. The superintendent and board chairman may decide whether or not to include those items. The final agenda must be approved by the board. If approved, the agenda will allow time for the remarks of persons who have requested to appear before the board. The board, hold just a minute. The board will follow the order of business set by the agenda unless the order is altered by a vote of the members present. The board may amend the agenda during any meeting by a two-thirds vote of the members present if the matter is a discussion item. If the matter is one in which final action will be taken without prior notice to the public, the agenda may only be amended by a two-thirds vote and a finding via a vote that an emergency or an exigent circumstance exists. Materials distributed to the board which reflect staff recommendations in their final form are open to the public unless exempt from disclosure by law. Materials of a personal nature such that public disclosure would constitute unreasonable invasion of personal privacy are exempt from public disclosures. Anyone desiring additional information regarding an agenda item should direct inquiries to the office of the superintendent. All right, that was BEDB. Is there?
That policy is for the general meeting environment. That's written specifically for your regular monthly meeting, even though it mentions special meeting in there. Go to policy BE.
But it says.
Yeah, but it says special meeting.
Okay, let's go to policy BE.
And I think you're out of order in speaking with, because you're not part of the board, Mr. Murray.
I have to comment on this. I was trying to give this a direction as to what policy you need to go to that.
Would it please the board that I read BE?
Please, thank you.
Policy BE, board meetings. Purpose to establish the basic structure for the conduct of board meetings. All board meetings will be conducted in accordance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. All board meetings, except for periods in which the board is in executive session, are open to the public. Annual meeting is the heading of this section. The board holds its annual organizational meeting at the third regularly scheduled meeting after election results are certified. The board elects officers and swears in those officers at the annual meeting. An exception to this schedule may be necessary if neither the chairman nor vice chairman is reelected to his/her board seat. Regular board meetings is the heading. The board holds its regular meeting of the board in one of the school facilities or the board conference room on the fourth Monday of each month. The regularly scheduled time will be at 6:30 PM. Executive sessions for legally permissible matters may be scheduled prior to the public session provided the news, media, and public are provided proper notice of any such executive sessions. In unusual circumstances, the board may change the date, time, and/or place of any regular meeting upon a majority vote of the board or by agreement between the superintendent and board chairman. Work sessions is the next section. From time to time, the board may meet in work sessions. The purpose of these sessions will be for the board to have opportunities for planning and discussion without formal action. Topics for discussion will be announced publicly, and sessions will be conducted in accordance with state law. Special meetings, next section. The chairman of the board or a majority of the board may call a special meeting of the full board. The superintendent should give at least 24 hours' notice to all members of the board and the public except when emergency conditions make such notice impossible. The board will not transact any business other than that which is stated in the notice. Public hearings, next section. The board may conduct public hearings from time to time in order for the public to express their views regarding a specific issue. The board will conduct such meetings in an orderly manner in accordance with board policy and regulation. Parliamentary procedure, the final section. The latest edition of Robert's Rules of Order will govern all matters not covered by the rules of the board. Is that all of them?
I mean, based on what you just read, I know you read a lot of different sections, but the one section that you read still states that as long as we're within the scope of the agenda. Are those not the words that she used?
Special meetings.
Yes, ma'am.
The chairman of the board or a majority of members may call a special meeting of the board. The superintendent should give at least 24 hours' notice to all members of the board and the public except when emergency conditions make such notice impossible. The board will not transact any business other than that which is stated in the notice.
Well, I don't think anyone's trying to transact any business that's not stated in the notice. In my opinion, this is an urgent situation. We are discussing what's going to happen with our schools starting on Monday. Last week, clearly the notice was late and unacceptable to the community. And here we sit on Wednesday with an opportunity to fully discuss and openly discuss our options. But without taking board action, I'm not sure what we can do here.
What part of the community was this unacceptable to and for? I mean, the overwhelming information that we receive.
Miss Ware, I think you may have misunderstood me. Not the decision that was made, but the timing of the decision.
And we know the timing was of the essence at the last minute.
I'm saying right now, it's Wednesday. We have plenty of time to openly discuss.
Well, if you're going to look at five days and policy are five days as you said the superintendent said, it would be the fifth day from even tomorrow would be the 19th, which is when we go back to school.
Well, that's true, but still there's things that are on the table that probably require board action because based on our vote last September, Dr. Thomas has no authority to put our district in the red face.
Dr. Thomas has every authority. She's the CEO of the district. Our jobs as board members are threefold. Our jobs are to hire and evaluate the superintendent.
Miss Ware, I'm aware of what our job is.
As well as to adopt policy. So I don't know what's missing here at all. Her job is to oversee. If we don't have her, this is a board's decision to run the district. We hired a person, a superintendent, to do just that. It is her duty and responsibility. We have had superintendents in the past who told us nothing. She is being as transparent as she can upon receipt of information. We all got the information from the mayor as well as the information that she had when she had the meeting with the superintendent of state education as well as with Mr. Bennifield. She responded. If she didn't want to tell us, that's fine. She is the CEO of the district. I don't know what's failing to be understood regarding that. I don't think she would put her children along with any child in harm's way. We, I, what I don't want is a dead child or a dead staff member, faculty, teacher on my hands.
I don't think anybody wants that. The point is we.
A point of order right now. We're just discussing. Can we add board action to a topic that's already on the agenda? That's what we're discussing at the moment, and we kind of need to stick to that. I want Mr. Carpenter to help us stick to, just we're talking about the agenda.
You're right, but she made a comment, and I'm still trying to figure it out, but that's fine.
Okay, I already made a ruling on that based on my legal conversation. And as far as the BEDB, we're saying that it is a point of order that you can't amend a special meeting. And when I say we can have, we can have a discussion, we're going to call the attorney back, and she say something, they say something else tomorrow? You want to call another special meeting, override it, that's fine with me. But as for this meeting, it's our board because it's not on this agenda. And the policy also we just take two. What's on the agenda?
Sub move to request for approval of agenda as presented.
Yeah, I mean, if you really carry on the conversation, I mean, that's fine. I'm not trying to block anybody from saying what they want to say. I'm just wanting to see what's here before me in policy.
At this point, I think it's. Anthony, at this point, I think it's most important to discuss options with our district and what's going on with our children. So in light of that, I will second your motion to approve the agenda so we can move forward and have that conversation.
You say you do what?
I'll second Ms. Ware's motion to approve the agenda so we can move forward and truly discuss what we're here to discuss, which is the children in school.
Okay, we can discuss what you want to discuss. I'll give you your first D. You got the motion?
You need to carry the motion.
I was about to say, we need to finish. We need to vote on this.
You need to carry the motion, Mr. Carpenter. I made the motion to approve the agenda. Ms. Little seconded. Can you hear?
Yeah. I think there's been a motion to discuss the agenda, and there's been a motion to second your problem. Ready for question? All those in favor, ladies and gentlemen, say aye.
Aye.
Pose is nay?
Nay.
Okay, well, we move on to other discussion. Ms. Little, you have the floor.
Pardon me, was the nay Mr. Varner?
Mr. Varner.
All right, thank you. I'm sorry.
As far as our district being on the red face, our board was presented a plan by Dr. Thomas last summer. We voted on that plan, and that plan include the red face, included the red face. Then in September, Dr. Thomas presented us with another plan, and that plan removed the red face. And we voted on that plan, and it passed that we would remove the red face. So with that precedent set, that we voted to add it and that we voted to remove it, in order for Dr. Thomas to act within her authority, I think the board needs to vote to approve her to do that. Okay, that's all I will say about the red face and the vote because I know we can't do anything tonight. My biggest concern and why I wanted us to have this meeting tonight is that it's been heavy on my heart as to what's going on in our district related to COVID, our students being e-learning, being on e-learning the past two weeks. So there's, I sent out yesterday, or two days ago, I put out some phone calls to various individuals that I trust and respect their opinions. And I also put a notice out on Facebook that asks for individuals to either email me, message me, whatever, to share their thoughts with me on what's going on in the community. Clearly, everyone is scared. Everyone would love for this virus to go away so we can all get back to normal business. Overwhelmingly, because, you know, I've always been from day one a proponent of everybody needs to be back in school because that's the best way that our students learn. But I do recognize that times change and our circumstances change and that we need to make sure that we're doing the best we can for our kids. So when I put out my notice yesterday, and I know one thing that you and I have discussed before, and also Anthony, you and I have talked about this as well, when I say I've talked to a few people. I know you guys like numbers, so I made sure I made tick marks on the responses that I got so I could share this information with everyone. So I got a total of 56 responses, and I was actually surprised it wasn't more. So that led me to believe that a lot of people are content with the way things are going. So I had 56 responses. Two people said, we'll support anything you do. One person said, I don't care what you do, just stop changing it. One person said they want a bonus. Fifteen people said they wanted full face-to-face. Ten people said they wanted hybrid. But 27 individuals responded that they wanted e-learning. So regardless of what I personally want my own children to be doing right now, if I take this, that those individuals that took the time to respond, the majority of them are happy with e-learning at this point. However, I don't think e-learning can go on indefinitely. However, I don't think e-learning can go on indefinitely. And my recommendation would be that we at least make a decision or allow you to make a decision for the next two weeks to carry us through the end of the first semester. And let's do e-learning and finish out the first semester. I know that creates some complications for EOCs and the high school and I think that, I think that they've already been churning to try to figure out what they can do there. And then once we start back for second semester, which is, I can't remember the date, if it's January the twenty-eighth or twenty-ninth, somewhere in that neighborhood maybe. I do think that we should put our ki- kids back in the building at that point. A- as far as right now, but we can reevaluate at the next board meeting. But Dr. Thomas, I know that, and I, and I know everyone, um, has been very adamant on making sure that we're following protocol and we're following policies. And I have talked to multiple individuals. I've, some, one at the South Carolina School Board Asse- School Board Association and someone in Greenville County on their board. And in order for you to carry out the authority of e-learning, we need to vote on it. And I understand that we can't do that tonight, but we need to make that happen in order to put that face back in to give you that choice.
Vice Chairman Carpenter, if I may speak, I would like to clarify that I've never implemented the red face. Um, if everyone will recall, the red face would mean that we would go until the numbers would indicate that, um, we were moderate or low, so I have never enacted the red face.
But the red face was e-learning.
But I've never enacted the, the red face. Um, as a result of our county being in a crisis, I implemented e-learning following policy EBCE, which states that the superintendent or superintendent's designee is empowered to close the schools in the event of hazardous weather, epidemics, or other emergencies which threaten the safety or health of students or staff members. The superintendent will take such action only after consultation with knowledgeable authorities. I am in regular contact with healthcare officials, emergency management, other super, superintendents, as well as city officials. Also stated in policy EBCE, the superintendent or superintendent's designee will make the decisions regarding school closures, cancellations as soon as possible and announce a decision to the local news media. So I just want to clarify because I know that we have never put anything out there as far as the wording of the red face because, and then according to the minutes from the September meeting, it says that my recommendation to the Board of Trustees would be to remain in the hybrid phase of learning unless or until the district moves into the green risk category of community spread, at which time the district will shift to face-to-face learning five days a week. In the minutes, there's no mention of the red face that are in the, the minutes that, um, that, that you approved.
Was it something in there, Dr. Thomas, about the flu? The flu policy would be followed or something, I, if I recall.
That is correct, yes.
Yes, yes. But, um, this was implemented as a result of the county crisis and I was basically following the policy as outlined, policy EBCE, and I did not enact or implement the red face.
I mean, I really think we're just twisting words here because e-learning is the red face.
The policy states that the superintendent is empowered to make that decision when there's an emergency which threaten the safety or health of students or staff members. So the decisions were based on, on that and, you know, can definitely change the policies. But as the, as the policy currently stands, that's what I was following in, in implementing.
Those prob, policies probably should be updated because the policies you're referencing to, because you've, we've already emailed some of this information, those are policies for snow days and ice and no heat or air in the buildings. Um, you know, those were never written with the intent that we would be in a pandemic. And when we approved and then pulled back from the red face for the reopening of schools, that was specifically surrounding the pandemic. But here's the thing, I don't want, I don't want us to get in the weeds on that anymore. I would rather us focus on what's best for our students, what's best for our teachers, and how we can move forward in a way that allows some of our students in the building and some of our students maybe hybrid or at home. Because I don't think e-learning can continue indefinitely. That's just my thought. I think by second semester, we need to, we need to get some students back in the building. And I did share with you guys three reports that you can look at when you're, when you want, that specifically talk about the, it talks about the proof that the students in K through five do not transmit this disease. Or the very miniscule point that they would transmit the disease. So I do think K through five needs to be in the building, starting second semester. And then our middle and high schoolers can be hybrid because I realize there's more changing, there's more moving around the buildings. That's just my thoughts.
And I, I would like to say that, you know, we definitely don't want students to be in e-learning indefinitely and that has never been communicated or conveyed. Um, we want more than anything, and I have expressed that from the very beginning, that we want our students to be in school and to be face-to-face five days a week. Unfortunately, you know, we can't control our current situation and, and that's what things were based off of. Um, nothing about the situation, the current situation is ideal. Um, nothing is easy about where we are right now in the pandemic. But we definitely do not want e-learning for our students indefinitely. And I think there's no doubt in anyone's mind that face-to-face instruction is what's best. I also have an article, um, that I will definitely share with you all as well that speaks about the face-to-face learning for students. And it also points out that that's when our hospital systems are not at capacity. That, you know, that it does not affect the hospitalization as much when we're not at a high-capacity or crisis situation. So I do have that available that I can share with you all as well.
Mr. Carpenter, if I may.
Uh, who's speaking?
That's me, Mr. Varner.
Okay, go ahead.
Again, I don't think we're, we're here to undermine, uh, Dr. Thomas's authority on this. I, I envision we're, we're more like, you know, Michael Howard, if you will. I think this board needs to support and buttress Dr. Thomas in whatever decisions. And we need to be unified and be really clear that, yes, we can also defend the same, um, decisions going forward. We're, we're not, we're not trying to undermine that, that authority and that, that responsibility that you have. And, and we're also not trying to set her up and say, you know, if you make the wrong decisions, now we have a recourse in us as a board and throw your way and you'll get someone else. We're not trying to do that. I think we all, all eight of us need to get together and s- talk about the subject here. And some of the things is, there's no right or wrong in this decision. There's no perfect answer. The other thing is, is like Ms. Little was saying, the transmissions with the, the students, and if you look at the deaths in South Carolina from this disease, there have been zero between ages five and twenty, zero. So it doesn't affect those young kids. I'm not a doctor, I don't play one on TV. I didn't stay on Holiday Express last night, but those are the facts, right? And so really what we're talking about here is, is the risk to our staff, and that's real. I mean, especially the older staff, they're the ones that are at risk here. The data supports that, right? So the, I think too many times we muddle things up and say we're trying to protect the students, but we're not. We're really protecting the staff. So let's, let's just be honest with each other on that. Protecting the staff, how do you do that? Well, you look at the transmission in the schools. I've talked to a couple of the different schools. I've looked at some data from Purdue and, uh, UNC and some other studies and they, they don't happen in the schools. We're doing the same things. Dr. Thomas and her, her staff are, are doing all the safety measures required, all the cleaning to keep it. I think the bigger hurdle for us, like Ms. Little alluded to, was just the communication and the timing for that. And so where I was wanting a board action was just to make a recommendation to Dr. Thomas, not to hold or do anything. I would say that we would, should recommend, like Ms. Little said, let's go on e-learning for the rest of this semester. Let's finish this out. We're already in a groove. I've heard this from several of the teachers, they're already kind of getting in a groove with this. I see the, the K four and five, only about half of those students showing up at a time, but most of the, the classes are, are okay. But let's commit to each other and say, let, let's figure out a plan in the next two and a half or three weeks. How do we get back face-to-face and protect our staff? Is that a Monday, Tuesday with a Wednesday off to clean the, the buildings and then a Thursday, Friday? I've heard a lot of parents say that really works well for, for their students and they know it. They just need to have a plan going forward. I don't, I don't think any parent is just wanting to, well, okay, some parents might want to propose schools, babysitter. But if they have a plan, then everybody can figure, can, can plan around that and understand what we're doing. We also look like we know what we're doing a lot better that way than, than later in, in the week, you know? So I said, make a commitment for two weeks and then let's commit to each other that we'll figure out a, some way to get back face-to-face for next semester.
I wish we could go back face-to-face tomorrow and I'm ready for it, just like the next person is. But you're right, and our first and primary focus are our children. We have to look at them first and you're great, you're right, younger children are the ones that need uh, to be face-to-face and require, but they do require more hands-on, you know? The, the nose running, the toys rehabbing and, you know, everything, you know? Unravel this for me or unzip this or pull this up, you know, more hands-on. And you're right, a lot of older teachers are in with the elementary kids, students that we have, but we still have to look out for the safety and well-being of all. Everybody in that building from the front door to the back door. Because if we don't have teachers, we won't be able to teach our children.
My wife is one of, one of those K four and five teachers is my wife, so yes, I, I real personal, you know, value in that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Well, Ms. Varner, I, I hear, I hear what you're saying. I think all of us want everybody to be safe. You know, but when I went into work yesterday, I, I was sound confident. And I was in the car with a young man yesterday and today I'm out of work because he tested positive. This teenager. So we just don't know. And, and I think what we need to do personally, we, we have to be on the side of caution when this stuff's out there. It has nothing to do with fear. You know, if, if, if an actual pandemic actually broke out in this community, would we be able to control it? Like we, the mayor put out statements Saturday, that's how dire it is. You know, and he asked everybody to, you know, working hard with each other to try to defeat this thing, you know? But I would like to hear what, um, Mr. Pass, Mr. Ross, I'd like to say.
Mr. Hughes is here also.
Okay, I, I didn't see him. Okay, I'm sorry about that.
Well, um, I, uh, since obviously our, our thoughts aren't really going to be taken into consideration right now, I, I would just like to know what the plan going forward for the next two weeks is, so when, when folks ask me, I can say, hey, this, this is what, what we're thinking about trying to do. I just, tell, tell me what your plan is.
Can I say something? Excuse me, Dr. Thomas, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair. Why do you think you're, you just got sworn in? You're equal like everybody else. You, you're, you're.
But, but we're not going to be able to vote on anything tonight, so.
No, but, but still, we hear you and, and all of us are here.
And that's what I'm asking. I, I'd just like to, to know what the plan is.
Yes, yes. But, you know, you have equal say, just like we all do. There are no big I's and little u's as far as I'm concerned. We are all equal in this together, hopefully for the same cause.
I hope so.
Absolutely.
I hope so.
Well, let me, let me, let me say, um, who is speaking? Mr. Ross?
Yes, sir.
Yes, well, I will suggest that you have a talk with, um, Dr. Thomas. I mean, she has taken and given us a direction. I mean, we may not all agree with it, but that's her job. That's, you know, what she put out based on the people she spoke with.
Well, and that's what I'm asking for, is her to explain it to, to me as a new board member and to the, and to the public, wha- what is the plan? I, I don't understand it, so I know the public probably doesn't get the whole picture. So that, that's all I'm asking for, is just for somebody to explain it to me.
Well, I'd be glad to share that.
Absolutely. The plan at this point, I am in constant communication, like I shared earlier, with health officials, um, other officials as, as well. So earlier today, I participated in a weekly meeting that's coordinated through the Lawrence County Emergency Management Offices. And so I will share some of the data that I'm using that is leading the decisions. So the, basically what we, um, learned through that meeting was that the critical nature of the healthcare situation in our county remains unchanged. There are three thousand three hundred and forty-eight beds, um, in all of our upstate hospitals. Two thousand eight hundred and seventy-six of those beds are occupied, putting us at eighty-five point nine percent utilization rate. There are one thousand seven hundred and forty-three ICU beds and one thousand four hundred and twenty-three that are currently occupied. Um, also looking at the de-hack data for today, there are ninety-six new positive cases for today. And as of the last data that I received, there are only two ventilators available for the entire county. Um, I've shared before, the National Guard medics have been called in to provide assistance as well as the family medicine doctors who are also providing assistance as well. And so the levels of infection in our county remain high. So basically, as far as the plan moving forward, based on the data that I have as of tonight, um, my recommendation would be to remain in the e-learning phase. I do have a meeting, um, uh, e-learning school operations. I have a meeting in the morning with, um, the Chamber of Co- Commerce. Um, it is the COVID Task Force meeting. So during that time, um, we will hear from healthcare officials and so we'll get the most recent data as far as the status of the hospital. So, um, at that point, I will be able to make that final determination based on that information. But based on the information that I have as of this evening, my recommendation would be to look at doing e-learning for next week. Of course, we're always continuing to assess. Um, and, and also, you know, possibly to, to the end of January would be what I'm looking at with the current data that I have today. Um, but we will continue to assess our numbers, our, um, we have a dashboard that's on the website that we will, that we continue to assess. We also have to, um, take into consideration our staffing, which we've done before previously as well. So, um, kind of at this point, that is the, the plan forward.
What about second semester? I mean, just what are your thoughts?
My thoughts are, if the numbers are lower, if the hospital's not at capacity, we'll go back to, to being face-to-face in the second semester.
Do you have, um, do you have specific parameters that you are looking for in order to make that happen for se- second semester, whether it be some number count, a percentage at the hospital?
I am, basically, I will continue to be in, um, conversations with the health, healthcare officials. If the hospital's still at capacity, then I think that, that will make a difference. If the hospital's not at capacity, then, you know, I think we can definitely move forward with bringing our children back. I mean, we have been operating in face-to-face five days a week. Um, we've been doing it since October for our elementary students and we've also had our middle and, and high school students back. So that is my goal, is to have the students back face-to-face.
I have a couple of questions, some, you may not actually have the answer to, but possibly.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Um, let me ask a question. Um, Mr. Ross, are you finished with your question?
Uh, yes, sir.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Carpenter.
Okay, Ms. Little. Okay, Ms. Little, go ahead.
You may not have the answer to this, but it possibly could be something you could find out in the morning when you have the task force meeting. Greenville County, their schools are in operation with K through eight, K through eight being fully in school. Their middle schoolers, the teachers are moving, and the students are staying in one classroom, and then their high school's on hybrid. So they're in school, and we've been told through the mayor that we're getting patients from Greenville into our hospital. And so as we get their patients, our hospital's maxed out, and we can't be in school if that's one of the parameters that you're looking at. But Greenville's in school, and they're sending patients to us. So why is Prisma choosing to do that when it puts a hardship on our community to put us in, to put us in a phase of having to e-learn? You know, what's, I'd like to understand the rationale at the hospital level, or, you know?
I'll be happy to ask that question of the hospital official.
Thank you. And then the other question is, and I, I did have this in the responses that I got back, a handful of people out of that 56, that's mostly those that wanted face to face learning, asked the question, you know, the state divi, the state provided plexiglass dividers for the classrooms. We've required masks in the classrooms. Why do those things, if those things were implemented to work and keep the students in staff safe, why are those things not sufficient at this point? And that's just a question I got back from a handful of those that wanted face to face. So I just wanted to see if you would address that, please.
Absolutely. Again, I'm not a healthcare professional, so as far as all the information is, is the reliability of those things, we can consult the healthcare professionals for that. But as regards to, I mean, we've had to quarantine students. We've had people who are positive, even though we have those protocols in place. So we do know that even though we have protocols in place, that we're still having to deal with the impact of COVID in our schools. So as far as why are those things not sufficient enough? Again, it comes back to the, the point of, we know, and, and we enforce it. Our administrators do a great job, but we have to deal with a lot of discipline with people refusing to follow the directions. And we see that a lot in the community as well. We ask people to, to not be close together, to not be, to stay six feet apart, but it's a constant enforcement that we have to do as administrators. And so because of that fact, because there are people that are choosing at times, and whenever we see it, we address it, but there are people that, we still have students who's, you know, their parents may tell them, you don't have to wear a mask, or. So we have to constantly enforce that. And because of the fact that there are people that are not wearing them properly, we address it, we're constantly doing that. And because there are people that may still come within six feet of each other, it's, it would not be the risk that we would want to take because we are having to constantly monitor that at the school level.
From a, from a contact tracing perspective, and I know Mr. Murray may know the answer to this, the, when a student at school tests positive, and then there is a, and then there's students that have to quarantine because of a student testing positive, how many students that were quarantined ultimately come back positive as well?
I don't have that data in front of me, but I can definitely, we can definitely work to try to get that information.
Are we tracking to that point, or do we, I mean, are we tracing to that point?
Mr. Murray, do you have any information regarding that question?
We do have numbers of people who have gone from quarantine to isolation, who were quarantined because of close contacts and who subsequently became positive for COVID-19. I would have to get the numbers and break them down by student and staff. I do have those, and I could get those for you.
Okay.
But the, the, a lot of the issues that we have with the schools are students who are coming in close contact with family members at home, or.
Right.
That, that type of situation. But then that, you know, if they get a positive test from somebody at home, then they come to school without knowing that, then that spreads out as well. So it's a very complex situation from that perspective.
Have you found that students are being quarantined more because of exposure at home or at school?
It's a combination of both, actually.
Okay.
We've had whole classes that have had, we've, we've had whole classes that have had to be quarantined because of close contact in the classroom, and then we've had situations where students just need to be quarantined because of close contacts at home. And of course, coming out of the holidays, there's been an uptick in positive cases among both staff and students that have been reported. And so we, we have a larger number of positive cases right now than what we normally would have.
From what I've been able to find from talking to different schools around, there was at least one case where a teacher was positive and the assistant was positive just shortly after that, and another case where an assistant and two students from one class were positive. But out of that school's information, that was the only two, two sourced contacts of transmissions. I, I would reiterate my point. I think Dr. Thomas and her staff are doing a very good job of keeping the transmission at school down to nearly zero.
I only had two more points that I wanted to mention out, or mention that were brought up in the communications back to me, and that relatively small group of people that responded, and that is, one, I think actually someone sent an email to Bubba about the daycare facilities, and then I also got one response just back to me about another daycare facility, the owner. And, and knowing in advance helps them plan because then they end up with more kids. And my suggestion was, could they, could somehow they be on the call alert? How could someone get added to the call alert in that scenario in which our changing the school day would affect their daycare business? Is that something that's possible?
Would that be up to the parent of the child who contacted daycare? I know it's kind of late in the last minute, but would that be up to the parent of the child?
Well, I'll just share, I'll just share that example. The particular person that contacted me owns her own daycare, and she went from having, she went from having her normal load to having 20 extra kids after Dr. Thomas's notice Saturday night. She thought students were going back full-time on Monday, and so she didn't have any additional workers. So when she finally got the notice through just word of mouth, she had like a day to plan for 20 extra students because those students would be coming to her daycare since they weren't going to be coming to school. Just, just a means of letting the daycares that are going to get our overflow a heads up so they can prepare.
Let me ask you a question as well, Ms. Little. This information you put out is on your Facebook page. Everybody, you must have the whole county as your friend on Facebook because that seems like something that Dr. Thomas should have, I mean, I think that.
I said only, only 56 people responded to me, that was it.
But what I said is, your, your Facebook page, I, I guess those are friends that you're, I don't do Facebook. I had it when I ran for the position of, of, you know, school board, but I don't.
Well, Dr. Thomas probably saw it herself.
Pardon?
I said, Dr. Thomas probably saw it. I mean, it was out there for public viewing.
I was just thinking, if the whole county were in on it, you know, maybe we could have gotten the responses geared to her, you know, just like you got that. I got lots of responses from teachers or emails and everything on my school iPad. I'm thinking, okay.
I'll be happy to share all the emails that were sent to me, but, you know.
That's just something, you know, because I would think that those would be just your friends, or, you know, I, I don't know how it's set up or what's going on, because I don't do mine. I get somebody else, I get somebody else, because I don't into, not into that.
Ms. Ware, the only reason that I did it is because, and I'll be honest, I had a, I had a thought process, and you're aware of this, that I really want the children back in school, you know, from day one, but I realized that our community situation has changed, and COVID numbers have changed. And I, so even though I had one position, I wanted to get feedback to make sure that I was sharing all the information that I could as we sat here and talked versus just what my opinion was. And so I openly shared with you guys that over half of the individuals that responded want e-learning, especially the next couple of weeks. So, you know, that wasn't personally what my tick mark would have gone toward, but I'm sharing what those particular community members shared with me. So, and the only other, the only other thing, and I, and this is me from a, from comments that I received through these 56, a few through these 56 people, and that is that the call alerts now are coming in as spam risk. And I think, I think people are missing the call, because I know I don't answer, I didn't answer that call several times until it kept coming and kept coming and kept coming because it says spam risk. Is there any way that we can allow that to say that it's from District 55?
Actually, we have checked into that, and Mr. Finley's here. He can definitely expound on that more. But after checking with, you know, we've had to, to change our vendor for that. So we're not able to change those numbers. But we have sent something out to parents to let them know to go ahead and be on the alert for the numbers that the calls may come from. But after checking and researching, we're not able to change the numbers.
Interesting.
Okay, I stated I wanted to give everyone a chance, Mr. Patterson.
Mr. Finley was about to address that, about the call alerts, Mr. Carpenter.
Okay, sorry, go ahead, Ms. Van.
It's, it's pretty much what Dr. Thomas said. There are five numbers that school status uses. Those numbers do not change. So once every, once, once everyone is familiar with those numbers, I think there's three of them that come up as limon, South Carolina.
Right.
One from Pendleton, and one from traveler's risk. I questioned them and asked if they could change the tag on that to at least say Lawrence County School District 55. This company is in Mississippi, I believe, and they just contract with local, you know, telephone companies up in our area. So there's not really anything we could do there, but I did send an email out making everyone aware, all, all the emails that, that I had for parents and guardians.
Okay.
And, and staff to, to list those five numbers and said, you know, just asking, please be aware of these and allow them so they would not be regarded as spam.
And do particular schools or the DO, are they attached to one particular number or the other? You said there was five that they use, or could it just come from any of those five at any time?
Any, any, any five, whether it's a school message sent out to just one school or, or a district message sent out to the whole district, you know, any of those five numbers could be used in, in a call or a text.
Okay.
So if principals send out to just their school, those same five numbers would still be used.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas.
Mr. Patterson?
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. I'm going to address the phone numbers right quick. Do we have those phone numbers on file that we know what those five numbers are?
Yes, as Mr. Finley stated, those have been sent out. So we can definitely make sure that, that you all have that information, but those have been sent out to parents to know what those five phone numbers are.
All right. I've just got a couple of things. As far as the transmission rates within the schools, University of North Carolina and Duke University did a study of more than 100,000 students and staff within 11 districts in North Carolina over a nine-week period, which took place from August the 15th to October the 23rd. Within that study, they found that 32 cases of in-school transmission were of COVID, and with 11 cases occurring within the elementary school. However, there were zero cases of transmission from student to staff. There's also another study that I ran across, and I've done some research on it. It's an article that was done by National Geographic that covered, actually covered four or five studies. One study actually covered 57,000 schools. Not 57,000 students, but 57,000 schools. And at the elementary age, from kindergarten through fifth grade, they found that transmission as well as infection risks were half as likely as those in upper, middle, and high school grades. Now, in stating that, for the next two weeks, I will have to say that we need to have a consistent schedule, so I'm all for e-learning so that we can finish the semester out. Now, in saying that, my primary concern after doing some research, looking at the state school report card from last year, and receiving information from the public as well as some other county officials, there are families within our district that are at risk of losing homes, that are at risk of being evicted, that are at risk of not being able to pay their bills. According to the state school report card, that makes up 74% of our district. 74% of the families within our district live either in poverty or below that poverty line. Now, I understand that as a district, there's not much that we can do to help that. However, I think that we should take that into careful consideration as we move forward in discussing what's best for the students, because I believe that the, our concern for the safety and well-being of our students goes beyond the school walls. That's all I have, Mr. Carpenter.
All right, thank you, Mr. Patterson. We're going to say the best for land, Mr. Hughes.
I have nothing, sir.
You have nothing?
I don't know why we're here. If we weren't going to do nothing, what did we come for?
Well.
But I, I would love to leave with a good plan for the end of the semester.
I thank everybody for the candid discussions. I think it was fruitful. We do have some work to do. I'd like to thank Dr. Thomas, Mr. Murray, every board member. And just caution everyone to wear your mask, keep your distance, wash your hands regularly. Stay safe, and hopefully see you on January 25th. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Motion.
Second.
The move, have a second.
Ms. Little's second. Second.
Okay, have a motion for adjournment, and move proper second. All in favor, let us say by aye. Aye. Hold your name. Have a good night, thank you all.
Thank you.